How about Crocker?
Ducking Lindsey traffic.
Good.
Good morning, good morning, how are you?
Even a little early to come to work.
I know.
Do you want to?
Sure. Yeah. You're sad, isn't you? I can't stand the silence. Can you tell? So Charlie?
It's good. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the flag salute followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by one of the three supervisors who is here, Supervisor Mike Ennis.
But pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. All right, we're going to start with Board of Supervisors matters right now, and I'll look immediately to my right because I know she's ready. Supervisor Shucklin.
I say, don't call on me, I'm not quite ready, but I'll be there in just a second. Yes, it's been a very eventful week. Let me pull up my little list here, that's from the city council meeting last night. Here we go. Last week, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but we had another one of our homeless task force meetings, and we have a tentative date in, I'll just, I won't give the date because it's tentative, but in October, we will be looking to do a summit that will bring together folks who maybe can share with us some of their best practices would have worked in their communities, so be looking forward to that. I also had, as Chair of the Health Advisory Committee, we had a very interesting meeting last week, talked a lot about the opiate use in the county, and that's on the rise, and the thing that was really alarming is with our youth, what's happening with our youth, and parents really need to know what's going on. There's a campaign about locking your medicine cabinet because our youth nowadays are just going in their parents' medicine cabinets and grabbing meds and taking them, not even knowing what they are, just to get a quick high. So there's a lot of information available on our HHSA website and through a lot of websites through the state. Last year, millions of parents learned they were their kids' drug dealers, basically is what's being out there, so a very good meeting there. And we have some great information also on treatment programs and what we can, what we do already in the county to help treat addictions. Tomorrow, we have the groundbreaking for Avenue 280 or Caldwell Avenue, the widening project from Acres to 99, that's at 10:00 a.m. It'll be at the first, near the First Assembly Church where the Miracle League Little Baseball Park is, so I encourage everyone to be out there, and I love the bottom of this because it shows all the agencies that are involved. A great collaborative effort, it's being paid for by Measure R funds, we have Caltrans, the City of Isilia, TCAG, RMA, so that'll be a great project to widen Avenue 280. What else is going on? I will be in Sacramento on Thursday, attending a CSAC class, getting my credential there, and the last thing I want to share is, I'd like to congratulate our Board Representative, Samantha Ferrero, for being accept, don't roll your eyes. Don't roll your eyes at me, for being accepted into the Leadership Visilia Program, and let's all give her a lot of support, and we know she'll do a great job. That's it.
All right. Well, now our fellow supervisor from Lindsey joins us after that horrible traffic in the town of 10,000.
It was Tooele.
Well, I was told there was a fourth of this bowl wired today.
It was Tooeleville, got off Panjama.
All right, well, glad you made it safely Supervisor Crocker. Board of Supervisors Matters, you're up.
Oh, am I?
No, I'm kidding, go ahead Supervisor Ennis, we'll give Mr. Crocker a chance to get settled.
I know what he's talking about, I about stacked it up on 198 coming in. I think a lot of people out there get their driver's license out of Crackerjack boxes because I saw a bunch of them this morning doing a little bit of everything, texting, you name it, in heavy traffic, so I see where you're coming from.
I think they're all from Porterville, though.
They don't have, half of them don't have driver's license there.
What I need to know is when they're leaving so I can get out ahead of them.
That's right.
Okay. Well, we had a TCAG meeting yesterday, and it looks like that we are going to get some funding to do some roadwork. We'll continue to work with the CTC and highway, see if we can get money for Highway 99, which is the big goods movement road that goes up and down this valley, and also to get farm-to-market money for our roads with Caltrans, or not with Caltrans, but with federal, to see if we can get some federal money to help us with our market roads. So, continue to work on the roads, continue to work, and Measure R is looking good, I think there was close to $31 million we've collected so far this year for Measure R, so that's looking very good. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the groundbreaking with Amy out there on, from Acres to Highway 99, the widening. That road is going to be four lanes all the way from Highway 99 to Exeter when it's completed, so that gives us another east-west thoroughfare. Of course, you probably get into a lot of signal lights when you come out of Exeter coming this way, but it won't be like 198, but it will be an extra place for people to go and maybe take some of the traffic off our other roads. I would like to see Spruce widened because I drive that road all the time, and the traffic is unbelievable on that road. This morning, I sat there at the stop sign going onto 198, and I must have been, 50 cars went by me before I could get out on the highway, so road is really heavily traveled, but probably never see it in my lifetime, but something that surely does need to be done. Thursday, we'll have the, I'll be going to the Ag Luncheon in Porterville, which I've been a member of for about 35 years, and going to Rick Elkin's retirement. Rick is retiring for the Porterville Recorder, been there 22 years, been a good supporter of the Board, and has always been a good straight shooter, so looking forward to going to his retirement deal. So, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, man, I'm sure glad I don't live in eastern Tulare County. Supervisor Crocker?
I don't know, it's not that bad. You know, it's been a good busy last couple of weeks, just a few things I want to highlight, I've been, had the opportunity to meet with both CSAT and Proteus over the last week, and I think there's a lot of areas of opportunities that we as a county can help facilitate, along with our education partners throughout the county, as far as providing services that aren't duplicative in nature, that we can, we can be efficient, we can make sure we're being effective, getting services whether it's to our youth, or helping with community development and helping with our communities, and there's a lot of opportunities, and so I'm, on the one hand, there's a lot of work to do, but on the other hand, I think after meeting, there's, I'm pretty pleased that we can find some solutions and make sure that we're providing better services for our unincorporated communities, as well as helping out with our youth. Just, Thursday morning, I will be going out to the Sheriff's Farm, go check out Captain Gwynn out there, and I'm really looking forward to that, and seeing all the great things that he's doing, helping to save the county dollars by providing food and different supplies for that department, and I think it'll be a great innovation that, you know, it's just something that you don't necessarily think of when you're on the Board, but I, and speaking with the captain previously, I knew what he's doing, but now I'll have an opportunity to see that firsthand, so with that, I'll turn it over, back over to the chair.
All right, thank you very much, and for those of you who are wondering and maybe missing Supervisor Worthley, I'm not one of them, but if you are missing him, he is actually not with us today because he is meeting with the Speaker Pro Tem of the Assembly, or Senate, he said, regarding the Temperance Flat Reservoir, and that briefing was taking place out of the area, and so he was unable to join us today, and he is very dedicated to that project, and so he is not with us at today's meeting. And he asked that I explain that and not just say he's not here. So, a few items that I wanted to cover for today's meeting. Yesterday Supervisor Worthley and I were on a conference call with the Public Utilities Commission, specifically Commissioner Martha Guzman regarding the implementation of AB-2672, which is a bill that was originally designed to bring natural gas infrastructure to disadvantaged communities that meet certain criteria. Three of those communities do exist in Tulare County, West Goshen, Allensworth, and also Ducor. That call went very well, but it's interesting to see how that bill has sort of morphed into, or implementation of that bill has morphed into kind of divergence from natural gas because some environmental groups don't seem to like natural gas, and so as this is implemented, communities are getting a little bit more of a choice, so to speak. One, natural gas that you pay for is being an option, and the other is community solar, which would be free to the community that would help offset all electrical bills. So when you're choosing between infrastructure you pay for and something that's free, that choice is very easy, you're going to choose the free energy, or whatever's going to lower your bill the most. But unfortunately, or fortunately, I hope that the Commission listens to stakeholders who are either in the community or acting on behalf of the community, that are really looking out for the betterment of those communities well into the future, in realizing that natural gas infrastructure is permanent, and it's infrastructure that businesses and obviously communities rely upon to grow and thrive, and it's also safer, and it's also an air quality benefit too. So, I thought that conversation went well, and I hope that the state listens to those specific interests that I mentioned earlier, speaking on behalf of these communities, that live amongst the communities that are being spoken on behalf of. I have a Retirement Board meeting tomorrow morning, which is why I'm going to miss the 280 groundbreaking, but I can say too about that flyer, it's nice to see all the agencies, and not a picture of the District 3 Supervisor on there either, that's kind of nice.
Yeah, there it says a bulldozer. I'm a bulldozer.
Then tomorrow evening, we have a Tulare Redevelopment Successor Agency meeting. Slowly, that Redevelopment Agency, Successor Agency appears to be wrapping up the, all of the properties and projects, and I think the goal is to try to get it completely dissolved prior to the formation of the countywide RDA Successor Agency that would have to come into effect to help dissolve and disseminate remaining properties and issues if individual successors, successor agencies aren't unable to finish on their own. The View Energy Partnership is going to be having a pre-meeting on Wednesday at 2:00. Wednesday or Thursday, Thursday, that's what I thought, I wrote it down wrong when I was preparing this. Thursday at 2:00, and we're going to be planning outreach events in Tulare County, one in Allensworth, and I believe there's a couple in the north part of the county, and then we're going to be shooting to do one in Pixley, too. But these are energy outreach events, talking to residents about energy improvements that can be made to their residents free of charge, about the various care, low-income programs that are available to help offset energy costs for disadvantaged residents, and so we've done a few of these outreach events each year in the past, and they've been very successful, and we look forward to continuing to spread to touch areas that have not been spoken to yet about this. The SJVIA meeting takes place here on Friday, that is going to be an interesting meeting, that is a rate-setting meeting, we are going to be adopting the renewal rates for county health, county employees' health plans. Preliminarily, they looked very, very promising, and since some additional work has been done, the results are not looking as promising, but we're going to see what discretionary moves can be made by the Board on Friday to maybe keep the renewal increases as reasonable and low as possible. Lastly, one final item, and that is, this Saturday at 5:00, always seemed to pick the hottest day of the year when they do this event, it's an outdoor event, the Summer Jubilee will be taking place in Tulare. It will not be held at a private residence this year, it will be held at Zumwalt Park in Tulare. That is a great event for people to come out and enjoy various food and drink items offered by local vendors, and it's a great fundraiser for the Tulare Hospital, and I encourage everyone to attend that can, this supports the Tulare Hospital Foundation specifically. That is all that I have for Board of Supervisors Matters. We will now move on to item number two, which I am very excited to turn over the microphone at this time to our Tulare County Fire Chief, as I think it's very appropriate for him to lead the conversation on this one, this is a real special recognition. Chief?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Spottamis Peterson. I'd like to take this opportunity for the Fire Department and the county to recognize Ms. Margaret Wells, doing something in the line of duty as paid fire staff, it's our job, doing this something, doing something heroic with, just regardless for any concern of your own safety, and just doing things for the right reason, this is a huge, huge event, and you're to be commended, this is such a great moment for you and for the county. Just briefly, reading the bio of what happened, on the morning of August 2nd, 2017, Tulare County Fire Department responded to a structure fire in the London area. Upon arrival, prior to the arrival of fire personnel, Ag Commissioner Inspector, and she's a county employee, isn't that awesome? She arrived in the area of New London when she saw smoke coming from the area of her residence. She arrived on scene to find two young children in the front yard telling her that their, her aunt and mother were inside the house at the rear of the structure. She went to the back of the house, breaking down a fence on the north side of the backyard access to the residence. She found a female occupant hanging out of a window of a residence with heavy smoke emitting from the residence. The occupant was unable to self-rescue, she was fatigued and disoriented due to the smoke condition. This time, without regard for her own safety, Ms. Wells was able to pull the subject out of the residence, get some assistance from some other people, bring her into an oncoming ambulance. The patient was taken to a local hospital where she was treated for smoke inhalation. After she was transported, and again, no regard for her safety, just doing the right thing. After the occupant was transported, Margaret found the children that were previously in front of the residence, and she found that one of the child, the children had left their shoes inside the house. This time, she gave one of the children her shoes so they would have something on their feet, as she saw them walking around in socks. The little boy also lost his blanket, and Mrs. Wells promised to return with a new blanket and a pair of shoes. On behalf of the county, on behalf of the Tulare County Fire Department, I'd like to commend Margaret Wells for her courageous act of bravery in the face of imminent danger, and thank you for a tremendous act of kindness in follow-up to this incident. Without your intervention, this incident could have been completely different. Thank you very much.
And don't go anywhere, Margaret, you're not done yet, I'm going to come down there and I'm going to present a proclamation to you as well, so Chief, stick around, Chief, please.
And this is, this was put together by our personnel, it's just, it's not that we have a lot of time on our hands.
This way, show it this way?
Yeah, let's see it, Chief.
Charlie, Charlie.
Yeah, hey, that's.
Oh, nice.
This was a surplus.
I hope, yeah, I was going to ask them, you know.
Chief, you can come on around, too.
That's Charlie's helmet, he's half ahead.
So Margaret, on behalf of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors, I'm here to present this proclamation to you. Normally, I would read the whole thing, but this is very repetitive because the Chief already read every single fact that was on here, we got this information from the Chief, so I'm going to spare you indulging me having to read this whole thing, but on behalf of the Board, it's really wonderful to see county employees doing outstanding things, and I mentioned on the radio today when I was interviewing with K-Tip, they said, is there anything else on the agenda that you'd like to highlight? And I said, I really do want to commend Margaret Wells for this outstanding achievement. I think that so often we hear such negative things on the news, I think the word that I used on the radio was crap on the news, but having a local story like this where you did something great, I didn't see it in the news on the national level like I should have, I think that that was a really heroic thing, and I commend you for doing it because it was the right thing to do. Not only did you rescue the occupant of the house, but you also helped the kids who were standing out front, and you fell, you followed through with your promises, and I think that's really commendable. And so on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'm very proud to present this to you, and I'm very proud that you're a county employee as well, I congratulate you, and I thank you again for all that you have done. So this proclamation is for you, and we're going to take some photos.
All right. Thank you so much.
I know, I know I don't like putting you on the spot, but you're welcome, if you'd like.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for having me here, it's really an honor, and just a blessing that I could be there, and to save someone's life, I can't explain the feeling, not just, you know, just saving a life, but a family. I'm a mother of three, and I couldn't imagine me not being there for my children, and the fact that I was there at the right place at the right time, and I feel like I did something that most people would do in that situation, you don't think about yourself, you just think about saving someone or doing the right thing, and thank you again.
Thank you again, and congratulations, Margaret, you are to be commended. Next, we're going to move on to take up item number three on our agenda, which is a request to present a proclamation to adopt the month of 2017, I'm sorry, the month of August 2017 as Valley Fever Awareness Month in Tulare County, and we have a very huge Valley Fever proponent in front of us, and that's Supervisor Shucklin, so I let her handle this proclamation.
Okay, we're recognizing August 2017 as Valley Fever, what was not?
That's not Valley Fever?
It's not, I've been checked. Whereas, Valley Fever, a progressive multi-symptom respiratory disorder, is a debilitating disease caused by the inhalation of tiny airborne fungi that live in the soil but are released into the air by soil disturbance or wind. Valley Fever attacks the respiratory system, causing infections that can lead to, that resemble a cold, influenza, or pneumonia. Whereas, once serious symptoms of Valley Fever appear, proper treatment with a toxic antifungal drug must be given. If left untreated or mistreated, infection can spread from the lungs into the bloodstream, causing inflammation to the skin, permanent damage to lung and bone tissue, and swelling of the membrane surrounding the brain, leading to meningitis, which can be devastating and even fatal. Valley Fever can be found in the soil in our area, a disease that has been studied for the past 100 years, it remains impossible to control and difficult to treat. Misdiagnosis of Valley Fever is so pervasive that experts say that some people suffer and even die from Valley Fever without knowing they ever had the disease. A diagnosis is reached sooner when a patient is familiar with the disease and its symptoms. Through public education and promotion of early diagnosis, the number of individuals impacted by Valley Fever may be reduced. There is no known cure for Valley Fever, but researchers are closer than ever to finding much-needed vaccine and potential cure for this devastating disease. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim August 2017 as Valley Fever Awareness Month in Tulare County, and just on a side note, having come from the medical profession and working in rehab, I've worked with patients who had Valley Fever, and it can be very devastating and have lifelong effects on you, so thank you for the work that you do in bringing awareness to this, especially, as it said, in our area where it is in the soil, and we do have a lot of disturbance of soil, so I'll let you say a few words if you'd like.
Please.
Yes.
Here's the scary thing.
Oh, wow. It's large print.
Yeah, it's only one-sided. So, good morning, my name is Robert Purdy, and I serve on the Board of the Valley Fever Americas Foundation. For over 20 years, our foundation has supported Valley Fever research, testing, and awareness. I would like to sincerely thank the Tulare Board of Supervisors for their support of Valley Fever awareness. As a lifetime Central Valley resident and a Valley Fever survivor, this disease is very personal to me and many others like me, and if you'll indulge me for just a second, I'd like to share a little bit about my history of Valley Fever. So in 2012, a lot of this, as you read this, I check these boxes, and I've lived that. So I have, I was diagnosed with Valley Fever in 2012, I was diagnosed with meningitis, so I spent six weeks in the hospital. The bump on my head is actually a port, those horrible medications that you discussed, they inject them directly into my brain. So in order to stay alive, not only do I have to take oral medication, but I have to have a horrible drug called Amphoteric and be injected directly into my brain to fight Valley Fever. It doesn't kill the Valley Fever, it just controls it. I've been on four different types of antifungal medications, as soon as I'm done here today, I get to head back to Bakersfield where I'll see my dermatologist, and they will remove a small portion of my ear, hopefully, because of skin cancer that was caused by the photosensitivity that's a side effect of the medications that I take, or had to take, actually. I was lucky that after the second time I had skin cancer removed, that I was able to get on a different medication, my insurance finally approved it. So, this is very personal to me, and I share the story not because I want your sympathy, but because I want you to be aware that Valley Fever can be a very life-ending disease, it can be debilitating, and it's, the message is simple, if you get sick and you're not getting better, just get tested, you're going to go to the doctor, they're going to draw your blood, have them check the box that says run a Valley Fever test, it's not going to be anything more to you, but it could save your life. We know that people that are aware of the disease get treatment earlier, and they live better lives. So, along those lines, last week, the Valley Fever Americas Foundation presented Dr. John Galziani from the Valley Fever Center for Excellence a check for $75,000 to continue work on a drug called Nicomiasin Z. It's a potential cure for coxie or Valley Fever. And Saturday, we had our sixth annual awareness walk in Bakersfield, and it was our most successful. And like you said, for nearly 100 years, California doctors and researchers have been studying Valley Fever and have not, and they have only scratched the surface of the disease. This year, Assembly members from Central California led the Assembly in passing a bill, AB-1279, which is aimed at improving the reporting of Valley Fever and developing much-needed public awareness. This bill went through two committees and a floor vote in the Assembly with no opposition. We hope the work they began before the August recess will continue in the Senate heading into fall, and will be the first of many state initiatives for this disease. I also would ask that the Board of Supervisors, join the current County Board of Supervisors, our foundation, and the Lung Association in supporting AB-1279 through a letter to the Senate Appropriations Committee. Thank you.
Thank you again, Robert, and thank you for all your work, and I think we're going to get a picture.
Okay. If I hold it up over my face, I look better.
No. Get back here, back up. All right. All right, thank you for sharing the story.
Before you leave, real quick, I just wanted to say thank you for sharing your personal story, and I just think that it's very, it's even more meaningful when someone is out there trying to spread public awareness and trying to help change people's lives for the better when they have actually experienced what they're trying to basically spread awareness about, and so you're to be commended for your services, and I hope that through awareness and through the efforts of your organization and the various state and local entities that are trying to help, that we can find a cure for this and make more and more people aware of it so that they can, to lead productive lives and survive once diagnosed, so thank you very much, sure appreciate it.
And I saw Juliana take note of contending as far as the Assembly Bill.
And we.
I'll send an email as well to.
That would be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to, this is actually an action item, this is a request to proclaim the month.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, and I have a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Worthley not voting because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Worthley not voting because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. Come on, come on, Shucklian. Next, we're going to move on to item number four, which is public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Public comment cannon will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak under public comment? Please come forward. You can use either microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, I wasn't here in time to fill out the paper. There was a little rec on 198. Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Mr. Tafti. My address is Pito Box 550, Goshen, California. As you are aware, we have been entangled in some litigation for the past 10, 12, 12 years. And I would like to address the Board in a closed session because of some of the items that has to be discussed. I don't want that to be aired out in public. Can that be arranged?
I do not know. I think I would have you speak with our County Council to get the specifics regarding that.
You know, it's funny that I sat on many boards for a couple of years and I chaired a few of them and I was always given the Roberts Rule of Order, which I think provides for a pathway that you can get a closed session to be in a meeting. But I don't recall how we go about that. I don't know if it requires a vote or how do we go about doing this? Because this matter really needs to be heard by the Board since all you members are, been on the Board after the origination of this action. And some items that are coming up and that I'm getting served by on the other side just do not make sense. And I think we have a overzealous outside council that's just running up the bill for the County and myself because I have to respond to all of it. So, I'm more than happy to meet with Ms. Peterson at a later date if you like. But eventually, I think this matter does need to come back to the Board. It has to be addressed.
This is why Ms. Peterson gets paid the big bucks. Do you want to respond yet? I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to say anything. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I, obviously, I'm not going to take any sort of legal position in public.
Absolutely. I understand that.
You know, I'm willing to listen to what you have to say to then be able to advise the Chair whether or not I think that this would be something that would be appropriate for a closed session, for a closed session.
Because of the involvement and some actions taken by the County Council, I really think that the Board needs to be aware of what happened in the suit and some of the actions that were taken by County Council. I understand that the people that were involved are no longer with the County. And I just think-
Litigation. What's the name of the litigation or what's it about?
It was Tafti versus the County of Tulare. It was actually a precedent-setting case in the state, changing quite a bit of the EPA laws in the state. So, let's just meet and I, hopefully, we can get that resolved. But I really want the Board to understand what's going on with the case.
Are you represented by Council?
Not at this time, no. And I would not want to put this off onto a Council anyway, so.
So you guys can meet about that and discuss the specifics and then we can, if it does meet the criteria as laid out by Council, we can move forward.
There is a time urgency in this matter, but I'm sure we can, we can probably set up a time, next few days, you think?
You can call me and we'll discuss whether or not, but based on the information that you told me right now, I think it is probably inappropriate for me to meet with you. But I will at least listen to some preliminary information from you and make a decision at that point in time. I cannot meet with someone who's represented by Council.
Well, as I said, I'm not represented by Council. In this case-
It's about a case where you were represented by Council.
I was, yes.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any additional public comments this morning? Tammy, are you walking up or are you going back to your seat? All right. If there are no further requests for public comment, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to our regular calendar. We will now take up the consent calendar, items five through 45. Item six will be pulled for separate action and presentation in action. Item 16, Council, I believe there's a correction to that item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the end date on the contract on the agenda is listed as 2020. It's actually a one-year agreement ending June 30 of 2018.
Okay. All right, so we will make that correction on that item. And then item 27 will be moved to the untimed portion of the meeting. Are there any additional questions or corrections to the consent calendar from the Board? Members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the balance.
Remove approval balance with the corrections.
All right, I have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar to be approved by Supervisor Ennis and a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, less Supervisor Worthley, who is not voting because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. Now we will take up item number six. Samantha.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Vanderpoel, members of the Board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson, Samantha Ferrero, Board Representative. The item here before you this morning is a recommendation from the Tulare County Youth Commission to approve a grant award in the amount of $10,000 to the Tulare Lake Basin Wildlife Partners for their Atwell Island Work-Based Learning Project. The money, the $10,000 comes out of the $20,000 pot allocated to nonprofit organizations in District Two. This project takes place in District Two. It's a summer environmental education program for youth in the Alpon-Alansworth area. It's 11th and 12th graders who are learning about the agricultural history of that area as well as issues that affect not only that specific portion of the County, but Tulare County as a whole, such as land use issues and water issues specifically. So it's a work-based project. The $10,000 will be going to stipends for the students. As a, you know, they're learning to get out in the community and learn about their area and it's a stipend for their hard work and dedication to the program. They're looking to recruit 14 students in 11th and 12th grade from Alpon-Alansworth areas. So just as a, as a refresher, the Youth Commission is charged with reviewing, receiving and reviewing grant applications as part of the Step Up Youth Activities Grant process. They made this recommendation to your Board and a lot of, the grant money is to go towards underserved youth, particularly in areas where there's not a lot of opportunities for youth to get involved in different projects and such. So that's the recommendation before your Board this morning. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions or comments, Supervisor Crocker?
Was, what, was this, was this a late decision or something?
This is an item, as you recall, back in June, the remainder of your, the rest of the districts, those recommended organizations came before the Board. In working with this, this project, we were requiring some additional documentation. Because the program does not take place until the end of the grant process in June of next year, we had a little bit of time to get the documents sorted out, the recommendation to go before the Board and then for the money to be processed.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate making sure that we are aware of what exactly these grants are doing in our communities and making sure that they're for the intended purposes of the program, so.
Of course. Thank you.
With that, the Chair will entertain the direction. I have a motion by Supervisor Shucklian and a second by Supervisor Crocker to approve this item. All in favor, please vote. All opposed, please vote. All abstaining, please vote. See, sometimes when you have buttons and when it's verbal, you got to say different things. So, motion passes four to zero, with Supervisor Worthley not voting because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. We will now continue on with our agenda and take up item number 46. Or actually, you know what? We'll take up item 27 first before we get to 46.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson. I'm pleased to be here this morning to discuss a new program for treating substance abuse disorders in Tulare County. The formal name of the program is Drug-Medicall Organized Delivery System, but it's commonly known as Drug-Medicall or the waiver. The background, this falls under the Section 1115 California Bridge to Reform Demonstration Project, or sometimes commonly known as Medicall 2020, which indicates increasing the number of services and the quality of services to Medicall recipients. This, it's a pilot program through 2020, but the State Department of Healthcare Services has indicated to us that this program will most likely continue past 2020 unless there's something unforeseen in the economy. County option to participate at this point in time, 53 counties have opted in. There has been 17 plans submitted to the State and there are three counties that went active as of August 1, 2017. The other option for this is that we are able to recruit, recoup 50% federal reimbursement dollars, which is new, that we're not getting right now for alcohol and drug services. Again, the purpose is to expand the range of services available to Medicall recipients and it's intended to strengthen and improve the integration to a whole-person care model. We know that people with mental illness, also at times abuse substances. We know that individuals that abuse substances develop mental health symptoms and generally, the entire population has health issues. This program would integrate mental health, health, to work with the person in a whole-person fashion. It'd increase the access to care. And with this program, we would be looking at promoting individuals coming into service at the correct level of service. And that would be done through using this American Society of Addiction Medicine Screening Criteria, or also called ASAM. It's a standardized measure which shows, once you give it to the individual, what level of service they need, mirroring what we do in specialty mental health. If there's high acuity or the substance abuse problem is severe, it may start out at residential. If we catch it early, we may be able to do outpatient services. Part of that program is also to align substance abuse programs with specialty mental health programs so that they can mirror each other and work together. Program overview, the treatment services will span all levels of intensity to recover, to improve recovery outcomes. That may mean case management all the way up to residential services. The other piece that it creates is a utilization control enhances the quality of services via performance standards. That is something that is missing in the alcohol and drug field at this point in time. The utilization control would look at pieces like access, timeliness, quality, and the outcomes of the services. Eligibility, Medicall eligible individuals and their family. That's what this program is for, adults and youth. And as in specialty mental health, you would need to meet medical necessity criteria. The medical necessity criteria would be established through the ASAM, that screening, but also a DSM-5 diagnosis of any substance abuse disorder. Again, services range from outpatient to residential. We have regular outpatient, intensive outpatient, case management services, also linkage. It's, it, just in specialty mental health, we know that if individuals' financial issues are a problem or there's mental health issues or they don't have the transportation to services, they're not going to attend. So this program would assist us like it has assisted us in specialty mental health. The application, basically what we had to do was develop a county implementation plan that we request them to opt in. It's not a binding agreement or a financial commitment at all. What happens is if it was approved here today, our implementation plan would be sent to the Department of Healthcare Services. They would review it. If that was approved, then it would be sent to the Federal Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, commonly referred to CMS. Then they would approve it. This process right now is taking about six months. Once that would happen, if all were approved, we would come back before the Board at that point in time to request for the County to enter into a contractual agreement with the Department of Healthcare Services to implement this program. So, in summary, the Drug-Medicall waiver, it increases services, it increases access and timeliness of services. It develops improved quality strategies and outcome measures. There's no net county cost. We continue to, we continue to receive the funding that we are right now for our alcohol and drug programs, which is realignment and a small block grant through SAMP-CH. What it does offer us is this additional revenue source of this 50 cent, 50% federal finance participation. So, just like in mental health, we would be billing for the services provided. If we opt in, the Department of Healthcare Services asks that we implement for one year. After that one year and any time thereafter, if we thought that the services was not fiscally solvent, we can opt out. We don't need approval from the State. We can opt out as a County. So today, we are requesting permission to opt in and send our implementation plan to the Department of Healthcare Services. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Board members?
Yeah, I just got one question. Will you contract out with places like the PAR Center or places that, to do the, to do the work? Or how does that work?
We do both, Supervisor. We do some in-house and this program would be done in-house.
Okay.
Supervisor Crocker?
So I, I don't have any problem with us proceeding with this application, but some questions. So there's no net county costs if we proceed with this, but we're increasing services and access?
Correct.
And so the 50% reimbursement, we get the funds that we already receive, credits, gets credited towards that amount?
We get the funds we already receive, the 50% will allow us to expand services.
But the, so if we're, for the expanded services, I guess I'm just not, I'm not clear on that. As far as from a, if, if we're reimbursed for 50% of the services we're providing, is that, is that just, we're getting additional dollars for what we're already doing? We're getting paid back. So where, so where's the, the savings? Do we, as far as from the mental health realignment, the small block grant? What are we doing with the additional dollars if we're, if we're not putting in new county dollars into it? Is that, that's where the expansion is, is going towards?
Exactly. Through, through the FFP, that 50% FFP, that would allow us to expand the services. That's a revenue source that we're not receiving at this point in time.
So we're not, we're not being reimbursed for 50% of those services? We're getting an increase of 50% of what we're currently, we're getting?
Right. We would still get our realignment dollars, we would still get our SAPD grant. This would be in addition to.
So basically, we're getting $100,000, hypothetically, we're getting $100,000 to carry these out. Now, by opting into the program through federal reimbursement, we'll get $150,000.
Exactly.
So we can increase the services that are provided.
Exactly.
My question for you, Dr. Durick, is regarding an opt-out cost, is there any?
No opt-out cost. Again...
If we implement, everything is going fine for a while, and then something happens unforeseen, we want out, any cost to the...
We're out.
Okay.
The only thing, again, the Department of Healthcare Services asks is that you give it a fair chance by doing it for one year.
Yep, yep.
But then, at that one-year mark, or any time thereafter, if something occurred that we found that it wasn't fiscally solvent, we can opt out.
So a couple of additional questions that I have. What is the, you said there were 53 counties?
Fifty-three counties have opted in.
Fifty-three counties that have opted in, so have any counties opted out, is a question? And the other question is, is what have local counties experienced with it? Has it been positive?
It is so new that although 53 counties have opted in, like I said, there's 17 plans at the state right now trying to get approved. There's only three counties that have actually started the program. And that began August 1st. One of the reasons we took our time on this is that we want to monitor those programs in other counties that have the startup, to see how it's going for them, are they progressing? What pitfalls did they see in the program? So that when it's time for us to implement, we can already take care of those issues.
I like this strategy. Any further questions from the board? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
Approval.
Okay, I have a motion from Supervisor Ennis, as seconded by Supervisor Shuckley. And please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, less Supervisor Worthley, who is not voting because he is not in attendance today. Next, we will move on now, back to our regular untimed items, and take up item 46, which is a request from the General Services Department, who adopted a resolution declaring the intent to sell or lease the real property identified as the old four-story courthouse in downtown Visalia. Shorty, the presentation is yours.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson, John Hess, Deputy CIO, General Services and Capitol Projects. So quickly, presentation is regarding the historic courthouse square development. We'll go over background, the RFP details, and the proposed review process, and conclude with requested actions. So the county owns, and this is a recap of a June 27th presentation, the county owns a variety of properties, most of which are used for their intended purposes. One of the most significantly vacant properties is the four-story, or the former county courthouse, known as the four-story kind of casually. The county has a lot of costs associated with our vacant properties, and the lease revenues from our leased buildings do not cover those costs. So one of the intentions is to take our vacant buildings and maximize their utilization as to offset our maintenance, liability, and operational costs, and that's the underlying purpose of this presentation this morning. So the building has historic value for the county and for Visalia. It was constructed in 1934 as an annex to the earlier courthouse, and you can see the picture of the 1880s courthouse there, which was demolished in the mid-'50s. The annex housed the county services such as the board, Board of Supervisors, Auditors' Office, assessors, and so forth, so it was an annex to the courthouse originally. It was used briefly as a courthouse, and most recently, it's been vacant for 10 years and recently used for social services. So as mentioned, in June, the board gave direction to move forward with an RFP. We are presenting that RFP this morning, and we'd like to request authorization to proceed with that. The vision of that would be a partnership with a preferred local private developer to implement an adaptive reuse strategy for the building. Self-help enterprises has been utilized as an external consultant to review this process and give us some advice throughout the process. The three main goals and objectives of the RFP are as follows. First, to maximize the value of a vacant and burdensome counting asset. Two, preserve an important historic structure. And three, act as a catalyst for economic activity in downtown Visalia. It's a very prominent building and very important to its location, its history, and so forth within the fabric of downtown Visalia. So the RFP itself has five sections. First is an overview, which is of course a one-page brief introduction of what the topic is. Second is a description of the property, which includes the history, specifications, neighborhood description. Quickly, the image on the right shows the property, and that's an image that's included in the RFP. You'll see the various different colored boxes, demise the property into various different sections. So we're allowing the development team quite a bit of latitude and flexibility as to put together their plan and their feasible strategy to develop this property. So through the negotiation process, after the board and the county selects a preferred developer, we can begin to look at that on a more deliberative process, but it can be the discretion of the developer to say they want to do just the four-story, the four-story plus the adjacent building, the entire property, plus the parking lot, whatever combination makes sense for them, we want to give them that flexibility and latitude. Section three is the development goals, which describes the county's expectations for the project. I have a slide in detail on that section. The section four is proposal requirements, the instructions for submission and review of the proposals, very basic, you know, it's due this time, it'll be reviewed this time, that sort of thing. Section five are the proposal sections, which are the specific prescriptions as to what will be included in the required responses. So number three and number five, I have more detail on. So section three, as mentioned, is the development goals, which outlines the county's expectations for the development project. This is what we call an adaptive reuse project, where you're taking a building that was constructed for a certain purpose and repurposing it for an end use that is other than what it was originally constructed for. So in our case, it was a government annex or courthouse. Now it's going to be utilized for a variety of downtown uses, some of which could be professional offices, retail, restaurant, residential, any kind of open... We're again giving a lot of latitude and flexibility to the development team to determine what is most sensible for their particular business strategy. The building will be provided to the development team in an as-is condition. It is older, it will have asbestos, it does have ADA issues, and those will be the requirements on the development team to remediate and address through their project. Other development requirements and assumptions will be, there may be deed restrictions required as a part of this project to either protect the county's interests, depending on if we sell it, or to protect the historical interests of that property through the negotiation process. In addition, the developer will be required to adhere to all the city land use regulations, depending on the disposition method that they go forward with, either sale or ground lease. The entitlement process, the process that includes their obtaining of any permits, any financing, will entirely be their responsibility. The financial feasibility, again, is their burden to demonstrate that their proposal is self-sustaining fiscally, and that they're going to be able to demonstrate that through pro forma. Assistance from the county would be considered on a case-by-case basis. Any assistance, obviously, would be part of the negotiation process and would come forward to the board for any consideration or approval. Section five is the proposal sections, which enumerates the specific sections that they will be required to provide to us as part of the response. So first, of course, is a color letter, and we provided a template format for the basic information therein. Second, qualifications, experience, and financial capacity. We're asking them to outline their past projects and the ability of the development team to undertake this project successfully. So the burden to demonstrate that this is something that they have the capacity to do, the past track record, that sort of thing, is what we're looking there, including identifying the development team, lead developer, any financial investors, architects, contractor, that sort of thing. Lead developer's experience with scope, budget, and schedule of other similar projects. The development team's financial plan and capacity, which may include financial statements from either their corporation or partnerships, lending institution letters for either past transactions or current transactions, documentation of any past adverse actions taken by any landlord or any financial institution. We'd like to see their general background and their financial capacity for this project. In addition, we'd like to see references for project references and to financial institution references. And finally, they'll be required to obviously give a proposed project detail, give us narratives, give us renderings, and if they are in discussions with, and in best-case scenario have secured either verbal or even written prospective tenants on the possible developments that will materialize. They'll also be required to provide their acquisition methodology, which is, again, relieving it up to the developer to choose which is most preferential to their particular strategy, either ownership or ground lease. Their project timeline, their financial feasibility, which would also include supporting market data to demonstrate whatever their proposal is, would be financially feasible and self-sustaining over the long term. So the proposed review process is put forth as follows. First, the RFP would be released. If approved by the board this morning, we would release it tomorrow. We'd have a pre-proposal conference next week onsite with anybody that's interested to attend. Questions would be due September 4th, and responses would be posted and put forth in the record on September 13th. Responses then are due on October 2nd, so about a six-week process for the respondents and the development team to put together their proposal and work together to make that happen. The committee would get together and review that over a week immediately after they're due. We would notify the top firms or the selected firm who are ready to make a recommendation on one firm, or if it's multiple firms, we would notify them regarding the desire to have interviews, conduct those interviews on the following week, and then we would present to the board the recommendations and the desire development team that we'd like to move forward with on October 31st. If the board is ready to select and make a recommendation on the development team at that time, we would then begin the negotiations of all the various different details associated with this. You can see there's a lot of practical details that will be addressed through that negotiation process, and so we're reserving quite a bit of time, a month, for that process to really transpire and get into the real nitty-gritty of the details of the negotiations. If at the end we feel confident in bringing something forward, we'd recommend doing that by the end of the calendar year, which would be December 19th at the board meeting there. So in conclusion, and these are sort of paraphrased versions of the requests that were included in the agenda item, first, we'd request that the board declare the county's intent to sell or lease this property. Two, authorize publication of a notice intent to sell for three consecutive weeks, as required by government code. Three, authorize submittal of a general plan referral to City Visalia, which were, again, a government code requirement. Four, approve the RFP and authorize staff to release the RFP. Five, approve October 3rd at 9:00 a.m. as the date and time to receive and consider responses. Quick note there, you'll notice that a day after the responses are due, they're due close of business Monday, the 2nd, we would read those into the record at the board meeting on the 3rd, and they would become officially opened at that time. Number six, appoint two board members to review the proposals and make a subsequent recommendation to the full board, so we are requesting if two board members would be available to help us review those responses as they come in, in that first week of October. And finally, approve an agreement with self-help for consulting services throughout this process retroactive to July 31st. So that, be happy to answer any questions or...
Questions or comments about this, Supervisor Ennis?
Would this also encompass the probation building?
It can, and so on that one slide with the image, there is the option of the development team to put forth a proposal wherein they could develop the entire property. And the strategy there is, some developers may believe that they could get more yield out of the entire development, because that building has been recently renovated, we did new roof, new HVAC, it's in pretty good condition, that may increase the economic viability of the entire development. So we wanted to have that latitude available to the developer.
Supervisor Shuckley, I know you're gonna have...
Yeah, I have a few questions and then some comments. First off, of course, I'm happy to see this here, so thank you for working so diligently on this. It's a very sensitive project, highly visible, a lot of interest from the community. A couple of questions, though. So if we accept this today, you say that the pre-proposal conference and walkthrough would be a week from tomorrow. Is that enough time for the word to get out to folks who may be interested to, I don't know, I've never, you know, I'm not a developer through this process, I've been through this process before, but is that enough time to get the word out to folks?
We would hope to, so we would hope so that it would be enough time. The wisdom or the reason why we, because we had discussion about what's the appropriate time for that pre-proposal conference, the reason is, we wanted to upfront as early as possible, have the developers onsite so they can see the building, talk, you know, with county staff and answer questions. Then we would take those questions down, and we would provide written responses and put those in the record so that they have a lot of time, abundant time, after those are provided, to put their proposals together. I think it could be appropriate to consider pushing it a week if we want to get the word out further, but that would, we would have enough time afterwards to provide the responses, was our intent.
And if someone wasn't available to make it that day, could they set up a walkthrough at a later time, just to see if somebody, you know, caught wind of it and is a viable party, they could come and take a look at another time?
Absolutely. We would be happy to schedule that, and any questions that are asked during any of this process all get recorded, and they all get posted as part of the official record of this RFP process, no matter if it's, you know, on the official tour, or if it's a different time, they all get recorded.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, as many people who are interested, you know, have that opportunity to do the walkthrough and see what all is involved in it. So also, as far as using the whole city block, whether we include the probation, is there the option of, say, somebody wanted the four-story and the parking lot that's onsite, but not the probation? Could we, could they have that parking lot, and then we then use the north parking lot for our probation use, if they wanted that onsite parking? I mean, is that...
Absolutely. It's in our discretion, when we go through that proposal negotiation process, to absolutely reserve the right for any buildings, and we would be able to negotiate the utility access and all those sorts of things. So definitely, if that were the desire to move forward, we could definitely demise the project in that way.
Cool. I've, you know, gotten a lot of inquiries on this. I'll be sure to let the folks who have inquired with me know that it's going to be out there. My only other thing is, I really think that it should just be a sale. I don't know if somebody would want to, I mean, it's their option, but would want to lease a property that they're going to put millions of dollars into and then have, you know, us to have to deal with if they want to make any changes or anything. If it were me, I would want it to be mine outright. I don't know if that will, you know, deter anybody from getting involved in this or not, so.
Good thing you're not Queen Shuckley, and you're one of five, so...
Well, but I do have the...
I know, come on, I'm just teasing you, Amy.
It's okay, dictator.
Supervisor Crocker.
Well, I agree with Supervisor Shuckley, and so I think that we should be selling it as well. So, Your Highness, I like that.
You make a good couple, King and Queen, right here, huh?
You know, something to consider. I got my, two questions first on probation. So if a developer wanted to include the building, and more than just the four-story, what would be the plan for probation? One, and then two, what's probation's thoughts? I see Michelle's here, and I would like to hear what her thoughts are.
Sure, and I'll, you know, quickly, I'll answer the first part of that question then. So the premise would be, whatever proceeds that we generate from the sale or disposition of the entire property, particularly if it's in the case of disposing of the probation building, which would clearly increase our proceeds to us, as that's a pretty valuable, recently renovated building, we would take a portion of those proceeds and either improve another portion of a county building, existing courthouse, government plaza, wherever that would be, or perhaps build or buy something for them. And we've looked around and seen what kind of options are available to us for that.
Do they have existing?
Yeah, so existing, basically, we're looking at the courthouse possibly, and is that really, do we even have enough room there for that?
Well, courthouse and government plaza, you know, as the whole space planning process completely unveils, I think there's going to be more space that's going to be opened up that we might be able to fill if we did have to move probation.
You hear that, Jason? Yes, yeah.
Phase four is what that is, phase four.
Yeah, phase four. So if our probation chief is willing, I'd like to hear what...
Well, real quick, before we get to probation, let me just ask a few questions of John before we get there, in case any probation-related issues come up that she can address, then if I raise them. One thing, no demo, right? So we're, or is this, if we were to sell the project, sell the site, if someone wanted to demolish the old courthouse, that's what they'd like to do, and we're okay with that?
No, that's not being entertained at all, right? That would not be...
Just want to put that on the record, thank you. Also, I'm glad to see that we are adhering to the city regulations, rather than using intergovernmental immunity, or whatever the terminology may be. I'm glad that we are interacting with the city of Visalia through this process, I think that's very important. Just wanted to make that comment. And then in terms of the committee, related to the review of proposals when they are submitted, first of all, on the timeline, I think that the timeline that you've put forward is more than adequate. I think we have a very open approach to this in inviting requests for a separate tour or... or let's say someone doesn't get word until mid-September, they could still enter into the game at that point in time and would very much have an opportunity to see all the material someone else saw, and then also have their questions demonstrated to the public as well. So I feel very comfortable with the timeline you presented. But in terms of the committee, we already have an ad hoc committee for space planning purposes that's dealt with designing a property and evidence facility in Tulare, or redoing Cigna, or redoing any of the buildings. So I think we have the committee structure already in place, and that's what I would suggest to continue to move forward with. And that's, those are my comments. But Michelle, we'd like to call you forward for an impromptu speech if you would like. And you can lower the microphone too if you need to.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. I have been somewhat aware of this process most recently. And although I appreciate that the board is looking at the fiscal viability and wanting to contribute to downtown, I just don't want to lose sight of the impact that this may have on probation. It would, and being able to continue delivering the quality service that we do, wherever that may be. I can just speak to, taking the parking lot behind our building and having us move to another location could impact our service delivery. There are marked probation cars with equipment inside them, so we have to consider community safety and our access to that equipment as well. But I support the project. I think it would be difficult to have a project, a four-story project next to us on the same site. I think it will prove very difficult, so I do hope that they buy the whole thing if somebody wants to purchase it. Because parking, just for us, is very difficult at that site, just occupying the small building. I can't imagine how the four-story, where they're going to be able to park. There's just not sufficient room, in my opinion. But absolutely, we would be part of the plan to relocate if necessary. Again, just, I would hope that we're not dispersed across the county because we also contribute to the safety of the community, and we want to deliver, continue to deliver quality services to the residents of Tulare County. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Any follow-up questions, Supervisor Crocker?
Not necessarily for our chief, but thank you for that. I guess the other part, and John, you kind of alluded to it a little bit, depending on the scope of what's proposed and what's actually selected, but are there plans for the proceeds of the sale, or what are we going to do with that?
So the county policy is that proceeds from either the sale, or for example, even if we sell an easement to a utility company, which happens somewhat regularly, those proceeds are deposited in Fund 522, which is the Future Construction Fund, which is reserved for one-time capital needs in the future, the premise being one-time money generated from sale to be used for one-time construction needs in the future. Which, to the point of probation, for example, if we needed to consolidate some of their services and do so, we could build something perhaps on property we already own, and that would be used for that.
Thank you. And I guess that's the only other, or the comment, is I just, I know we've, we looked at this in June as, from a holistic standpoint, from property, and again, I would be supportive of a sale. I don't think that it's the county's role to be involved with property management outside of our own facilities or from a developer's standpoint. And I would also like that we be consistent with that with future surplus property as well, that we turn that over to the experts that are actually doing that. I know that from a financial standpoint, it may not be as viable, but, you know, we've, we're not in the game to make profit over profit over profit. We're here to provide vital services that the private sector is not able to do. And so that's what I would be supportive of here today.
And I don't believe, I think we're just saying out to the general public, come forward with a plan. We're not saying sale, lease, anything. And I don't want to join the royal family in saying it, but I mean, I do think that the most likely outcome is going to be outright sale. But what that ends up looking like... Prince Pete. Yeah, Prince Pete, great, I'll take it. As long as I'm not Queen Shuckley. But we'll...
You'll never be Queen Shuckley.
We'll point out, we're not going to direct this process. I think we're just putting it out there, inviting other perspectives, other approaches, and I think that's a really good approach. And I do think that it's also important as well to highlight in the offering, or in the proposal request, that parcelization of these properties may be possible. You know, I don't know, obviously, Chief Bonnell commented on the fact that parking is a real pain anywhere in downtown Visalia, but specifically at this location. And so maybe that parking lot that we have to the north is a critical piece of any proposal. But there may be value just in that piece on its own, and through the project that comes forward, maybe they build another parking garage in the existing parking lot. So maybe that north piece could have independent viability for development. So I just think we need to be flexible in that offering to make sure that people are aware, hey, these are all possibilities.
And one point I thought I'd like to add is, we have been keeping a list of thirty-five to forty interested parties, and we will be sending out notices to those with addresses and phone numbers and so forth, so we'll be making sure those folks are notified as well.
Right, sure.
Yeah, a couple more comments. You know, I agree, it is put out there for the option of a lease or sale, so I'm okay with, you know, putting it out there in that sense right now. As the report states about the committee, I personally, since it is in my district and I have had a big interest in it, I would like to be on that committee and the review committee, so I'd like it to stay the way the staff report states to have the committee. And the only other thing is, I don't want to put him on the spot, but I see that Deputy City Manager Mario Sifuentes is here with the City of Visalia. I don't know if he has anything to say. You don't have to, Mario, but I'm sure you heard that we're ready, willing, and able to work with the City of Visalia on this to get it done right, so, thank you.
Well, any further questions or comments?
I don't think the whole idea behind this is to move the project forward and see what we get, so...
And one of the requests is, in terms of the committee formation, what is the desire of the board related to that? I mean, this has been a standing committee that's dealt with projects, whether they are in District One, or District Two, or District, I mean, Three. So it hasn't really been district-specific up to this point, and it is going to ultimately come down to a decision of the board as a whole, and will go through a very public process like this. So I don't know if we want to adjust the committee structure that we have in place, or if we want to come up with a new committee. What's that? Well, and there is concern about the Brown Act, so obviously, there can't be more than three, so it's going to be a committee of two.
I don't have a problem with going with staff recommendation and creating a new ad hoc. This board has not had any issues creating ad hocs in the past.
Yeah, we've created a lot of ad hocs.
We've created plenty, and what's one more?
So with that, I would like to...
Is that, as long as it's two?
It's two, it specifies the chairman and the District Three member.
That was our recommendation on the staff report.
Perfect.
I would like to move approval of staff report as written.
Okay, great.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor, oh, actually, before we take a vote, any additional public comment on this? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Shuckley and a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Worthley not voting because he is not in attendance today.
I was going to vote no, just to kind of toy with y'all.
The name of the ad hoc committee will be, we can call the ad hoc committee the Four-Story Ad hoc Committee, or the Shuckley and Ad hoc Committee.
I liked that, that was good.
Print Queen Shuckley and Ad hoc Committee.
We're calling the project the Historic Courthouse Square.
I like, I like the...
Little friendly.
It makes it sound like it's more than just the four-story.
Yeah.
Hey, John, good report.
Well, thank you.
Yes, very thorough.
Very tall.
Very thorough, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And we call you Four-Story John.
Any further questions or comments related to this by board members? We do have an eleven o'clock timed item, and that is item forty-seven. That will be taken up across the parking lot over there at the new HR and D department. But that will be taken up at eleven o'clock, between now and eleven o'clock. We can adjourn this regular board meeting, and council, do we have need for closed session at this time?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have items A through G, and I do expect an announcement out.
You have valley fever, or are you okay?
Rocky Mountain spotted.
All right, so we will adjourn from open session at this time and reconvene at eleven o'clock. We will adjourn for closed session. Thank you for attending today's meeting.
All right, this is Deanne Peterson, County Council, reporting out on closed session, item B, Galindo versus County of Tulare. On a vote, on a motion by Supervisor Shuckley, and seconded by Supervisor Ennis. On a four-zero vote, the board voted to authorize legal representation to Sheriff's Deputy Laura Salcedo under a reservation of rights. Supervisor Worthley was absent from this vote. On item C, on a motion by Supervisor Shuckley, and a second by Supervisor Crocker, on a four-zero vote, the board authorized to defend HHSA employee Tony Wang under a reservation of rights. Supervisor Worthley was not present for the vote. On item D, on a motion by Supervisor Shuckley, and a second by Supervisor Crocker, on a four-zero vote, the board authorized representation of HHSA employee Tony Wang in the Young versus County of Tulare Superior Court Case Number VCU 269002. There was no other reportable action out of closed session.